We have seven o'clock, so we will begin our meeting. I'd like to welcome those of you that are here to our new space. This is the Parkway Welcome Center where we will continue our board meetings in this space. So as long as we're in person, this is where we'll be. So we'll start out with the Pledge of Allegiance, just like normal. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Nikki, would you please call roll?
Here.
Ms. Hill?
Here.
Ms. Tapper?
Here.
Ms. Gillett?
Here.
Ms. Giardino?
Here.
Ms. Dilzer?
Here.
Ms. Topp?
Here. Let's see, we have no closed session, we have no special recognitions unfortunately. We do have some additions, corrections, and/or modifications to the agenda, and they are 6.01, Addendums to Agenda Item 10.08, Approval of Personnel Items; 6.02, Addition of Agenda Item 10.27, Approval of Purchasing of Sanitizing Backpack Sprayers. And that is all. Next, we will move on to public comments, and I will read our standard statement, and that is, "We provide an opportunity at each meeting for citizen comment in an effort to maintain an open and respectful dialogue with our community. The public comment session is not the appropriate forum for addressing individually identifiable student and/or personnel matters. Therefore, due to privacy laws protecting students and employees, comments about these matters should not include personally identifiable information about particular students or employees. Members of the public, staff, and students are encouraged to utilize established policies and procedures for offering suggestions for addressing concerns and complaints prior to bringing the issue before the Board. Please be mindful that the meetings of the Board including your statements at the podium are broadcast, and that you are responsible for any public comments you make. In lieu of a public statement, you may choose to submit your comments to the Board in writing. Also, due to time constraints and the need to complete our primary responsibilities of our meeting agenda, we cannot respond during the meeting, so you will receive a response from us in writing. We are always available to have an open dialogue outside of our meetings and can be reached by email or phone using our contact information on the Parkway website." And tonight, we have one speaker who is here live, and we have one statement that was submitted for me to read. So we will start off with Samantha White.
Hello. Do I need to be closer?
You're good.
Awesome. Hello, Parkway School District Board of Education. My name is Samantha White. I am a Parkway resident and a co-parent to a current sixth grader at Parkway Northeast Middle School. I appreciate your time. I am speaking tonight on behalf of the grassroots effort in Parkway, which includes parents, students, alumni, current and former staff members and administrators, as well as three elected officials, to request an audit of Parkway's School Resource Officer Program. At the last Board of Education meeting, a fellow supporter of this effort spoke on behalf of our coalition. President Jeff Todd's thoughtful response indicated that, after speaking with Superintendent Marty, the Board of Education believes, quote, "A positive next step should be to conduct a formal program review of our SRO program in conjunction with our regularly scheduled review of our internal security program. I wanted to formally thank you on behalf of the more than 450 Parkway community members who also support a review of the SRO program. The Board's willingness to listen to the Parkway community is a sign of leadership and open-mindedness. I also appreciate how President Todd outlining in his response how a Parkway program review occurs. He noted that, quote, "A program review consists of formal surveys, as well as a study of data and feedback from a variety of stakeholders, including students, parents, teachers, and staff. It concludes with a presentation of findings and recommendations to the school board at one of the Board's meeting, regular meetings, with a full report posted on the Board's website for public review. As a follow-up to President Todd's note and explanation, I ask of the Board, will you endorse, including in the SRO program review process, an explicit evaluation of how the SRO program impacts Black and Brown students? And will the Board commit that any action taken after the program review will be informed by how the review finds the SRO program to impact Black and Brown students? I make this request because there is meaningful evidence that the School Resource Officer Programs are harmful to students of color, especially Black students, in both subtle and overt ways. It is time to reckon with our history of racial injustice, and I am eager to see our school district take action that is in the best interest of all of our students. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time, and I look forward to a response."
Thank you. Statement by Dr. Kemba Metropolis, who is an English teacher at Parkway Central High School. "I have taught ninth grade English for the past 12 years. I enjoy meeting the new freshmen, introducing them to the classic and contemporary literature, and watching them turn into more sophisticated writers by the end of the year. 2020 has been a year like no other. My freshmen had to become acclimated to a semester's worth of skills and analysis in half the time they usually have. One of the reasons we see so much growth in reading and writing in ninth grade is that our kids have time to process information. My kids have been overwhelmed by the pace of English I. Most studies in research, I'm sorry, most studies that research the positive effect of accelerated courses are for students at the collegiate level, not high school. This quad master feels like I had to cook Thanksgiving dinner in the microwave oven and serve guests who've already finished a Thanksgiving brunch with their grandmother and polished off a lunch with their in-laws. We are teaching in unprecedented time. Everyone is doing the best that we can under the circumstances. As you continue to plan the return-to-school schedule and look toward the spring semester, please consider returning to the traditional semester-long schedule so our students can process the information and skills we are introducing to them in high school so they can achieve true mastery in all of their courses. We would not feed guests raw chicken with our finest silver and crystal. Let's not do the same to our students in the spring. Thank you for your consideration." Thank you very much. Kemba? Moving on to the approval of our agenda, may I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education as scheduled for October 21st, 2020?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. The next regular board meeting will take place on Wednesday, November 18th, 2020, beginning at 7:00 PM. As I mentioned, the Board of Education meetings will continue, will continue to plan for in-person meetings. Depending on the circumstances, we may end up going back to virtual meetings if needed. Right now, I'll ask for any board liaison reports.
I can start?
Sure.
Okay. I'll just say, I'm glad to be here tonight. It's, I remember distinctly back to March 11th, last time we got together. We had the regular board meeting, and then we're going into close, and Kevin said, "The NBA just suspended the season." It was like, uh-oh. And then he thought, maybe after spring break, we might be able to come back maybe a week or two later. So here we are now in October. So I'm hopeful for a stronger finish for 2020 and a very, very fruitful 2021. Happy New Year.
I'm also happy to be back. I also remember that date distinctly because that meeting also happened to be on my birthday, so it's always going to stick in my head. I just, since our last meeting, I did have the privilege of attending one of our football games. I'm a marching band parent, so I got to go to the Parkway West football game. And I have to say, I was very proud of our parents and our students because they followed the rules, and they were masked, and they were distanced, and it was a great game, and people loved seeing each other. I think the parents were just as socially starved as anyone else because we talked a lot. So I was very happy to be able to do that and to start getting some of those kinds of things back and getting these kinds of meetings back.
I just want to say, welcome to everyone. It's good to be back. We've had some great meetings considering the circumstances with Zoom. I think they went very well. It's kind of difficult to speak at your computer. It's just not like, you know, talking to someone across the table, but it's great to be back, great to see everyone, and we're looking forward to the opening day and our students back in school.
So looking forward to dropping my daughter off at school tomorrow, and grateful to all the work that has gone in in pretty short order to get, get ready, to get kids back. I will also comment that last week, Sam and I participated in the second meeting, third, third meeting of the Equity Task Course. We were really broken down into work groups for that meeting and making plans, so it was good to see that work moving along.
Thank you. I can't believe Pam beat me to a football game, but perhaps I'll get to one soon enough. Just like everyone else up here, it is great to be back in person. Obviously, we're together, and as you look around the room, it is weird, but here we are, and I think we all should sort of get used to that. We, this is actually my second time in a Parkway building in two days. We toured my children's new elementary school yesterday, and it's the same feeling. It's really nice to be back. It feels somewhat familiar, but certainly with a whole lot of differences that we'll all get accustomed to. And speaking of getting accustomed to, I'll miss being able to do these meetings in basketball shorts, but it's good to be, feeling like real people and real elected officials again. And obviously, close with thank you for everyone's hard work that brought us to this moment of being able to do this in person, our kids being able to be in the building tomorrow. I know from the outside looking in, it's just business as usual, but those of us from the inside looking out know how much effort and energy goes into accomplishing something like this. And so, on behalf of the whole board, thank you to everyone who made this happen.
Ditto to what everyone else has said. I'm very excited to be back. Thank you for all the hard work for getting this building built, Patty and her team. And Nikki, thank you very much for all your, Nikki has worked long, hard hours to try to make sure that we had a safe, in-person board meeting tonight, so thank you very much. And thank you to all of our staff who are, we know how much hard work, Dr. Watson, Dr. Beckner, Dr. Matheson, Mr. Boggs, the whole team, Mr. Tandy, everybody, has worked so hard to try to get our requests for in-person education back on board, and we're hoping that that will continue to move forward. It's a huge effort, and I saw this big yellow thing going down my street yesterday morning. I'm like, what is that? Oh my gosh, it's a Parkway bus! Haven't seen that in months. So it was, it was wonderful. It was great to see our buses out there, running their routes and getting ready and prepared. So thank you so very much. And, you know, we just, it is going to be great to have everybody back. Also, along with that, a number of us have been continuing to review board policies. We're reviewing, I know, the finance, we're reviewing student services, and I'm sure that there's some others that are under review at this time. So we're making a huge effort to get through all of those and revising them, updating them to where they need to be, and also looking at it also in the lens of virtual learning. Now that this will probably be something that we're continuing on for some time, they need to be part of our policy, so we're looking at that as well. So thank you to everybody again for being here tonight.
And I'll just add my thanks, along with everyone else, to everyone who has done just the yeoman's work this, this past few months trying to, trying to make learning and teaching happen as it has. And I think overall, we've, we've learned a few things, but I think overall, we've delivered a pretty good, pretty good opportunity for our students, and that's, that's why we're here. So thank you for everyone who's participated in that. I also, I think, you know, every, every meeting, we thank different people, different groups of people, and I, I was thinking the other day about who's, who's really taken the brunt of the questions and phone calls and stuff for the last few weeks, as, as, you know, we made our announcement a couple of weeks ago that K-8 was coming back, and, and I think that we need to, we need to thank our secretaries, our building secretaries, our principal secretaries. They're the ones that answer the phones and, and have to route those calls and oftentimes get the frustrated or confused parents, and so I know they're doing a lot of hard work to get answers to our parents, so we appreciate them. In the last couple of days, Dr. Marty and I have been able to welcome back, as we do the traditional beginning of the school year, we, we visit different groups of employees, and we welcome back the food service workers, and yesterday met with the, I think it was yesterday, maybe it was, I don't know what day it is anymore. We met with PTO leaders. We had a great group of dozens of PTO leaders from across the district in their respective buildings who have been working really hard to support their teachers who are coming back, to support the building projects inside their schools, special projects that their families help fund. And they're, they're making some really creative uses of their talents and energy to, to do that under the circumstances that we have. So wanted to, wanted to just continue to thank them and appreciate their support for their individual school communities. That's about all I have. Do you have anything else to add?
Well, since we're spending some time on thank yous, I appreciate that, board members, all your recognition. But the group that we really, really need to thank here for their work this first quarter, and Pat McFarland is one of the few guests here tonight, is our, is our educators, our teachers. You know, I have just been so impressed, and I think so many of our community members, even though sometimes they've had criticism, one of the things they usually say is, "Our teachers are working so very, very hard," they recognize it as well. So I think that we as a board, we as a district, really have to be indebted to the work that our teachers have completed this first quarter, and now in transition, getting ready for, you know, a move, a lot of them are going to have new students, and they're transitioning. So we're really very, very proud of our educators, our teachers, as well as so many others, our operations staff, and getting our billing ready. Patty had a note meeting the other day, and I just recall how much work is really going into, from transportation to food service and all that work as well. I do want to also thank, you know, there's, there's a lot of stress out there, and I know sometimes Jeff and I get some letters or notes or messages from concerned parents, but I think it's all in really good, in the best interest of their children. They're asking some tough questions, they're concerned, but, and I really appreciate the fact that our parents and our community have been very patient as well, hanging in there. And I think when the dust settles and we get students back and we start our two options, I think we'll be in good shape. Hopefully, things will settle down a little bit, we hope. But again, a lot of thank yous to go around, and certainly we probably should thank our students as well for their, their efforts and their cooperation. So a lot of thanks to go around, our community has pulled together. I will also say, this group sitting in front of us has been unbelievable. Their work, their dedication has just been amazing. I'm so proud of them and the work that they have completed, and so proud to be part of a group that doesn't ever say no, and just keeps working and working and working. They, as you've recognized them already, have all, and so many of our principals and many others have stepped up. I wish we had them all here tonight because it'd be nice to recognize more, but this group and so many others represent the really dedication, dedicated people we have here in Parkway.
Thank you. Next, moving up, we, we don't have any board subcommittee reports. We do have, as Debbie mentioned, some continuing policy subcommittee work that's continuing to move forward. So next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The Board's already seen those items, so may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the October 21st, 2020 board material?
Second.
Is there anything to be pulled to action or closed? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries 7-0. We have no action items, we have no policy review, so we will move directly to reports. And the first report, the only report we have tonight, is a report on the return to students, return of students to in-person instruction pre-K through 12. So Dr. Marty, would you like to introduce that?
I sure will, and I just, you know, we're in a transition time. We've had a, truthfully, we just mentioned, a very good first quarter, but we're so glad to get students back in our building, and so many of our students are glad to be back as well. And for some of our students, it'll, it'll be an improvement, certainly in terms of their having an instructor face-to-face. Many of our students have had, had great success, others have had not so much success, so it's really important now that we, we are getting some of our students, many of our students back. So while we've talked a lot the last several meetings and discussions about the decisions of bringing folks back, tonight, we just want to review some of the work that has taken place in terms of bringing students back. We're going to have Robyn Wallen start off by talking a little bit about some recent data. We're going to keep watching. One of the steady questions I get from parents, I think many of us, board members, is, you know, it doesn't look good. Well, Robyn will update that, and there is some concern, but we're going to move forward. At least we'll be in a situation where we now have made a decision to have our two options in place, but we're going to have to watch the data. And I can tell you, in a meeting today with Ed Plus superintendents, everybody is a bit concerned about what's happening, but we're also learning a lot that many schools have had quarantines, and some districts have had some positive cases, but reasonably, things are going pretty well, even in the schools that have, you know, have everyday person-to-person instruction. So after Robyn completes that, then we'll hear from Dr. Watson, who will review the pre-K through eighth grade work. Then Dr. Beckner will review high school. And then Doc, Mike, I almost called him Dr. Ro, Mike Ross, Mike Ross will talk a little bit about the, what's been going on with athletics and activities. We've been very proud as, as Pam mentioned, that our programs have gone, gone very, very well. So Mike will review that work, and then Paul Tandy will finish up just reviewing some of the ongoing communication and work that we're going to be doing to make sure our community has kept abreast of the work of the district. So if I could call on Dr. Robyn Wallen, and as she is coming to the podium, we have a celebrity here. This is an individual who we are very, very proud of, but this last week got named the School Nurse Administrator of the Year, and well-deserved, Dr. Wallen. I can't believe she hasn't won it before. She's been in the district, I think, five years now, Robyn, right? Four, five years? And so this is well-deserved, so congratulations, Robyn.
President Todd, Dr. Marty, members of the Board, tonight, I would like to share with you some of the updated data points that we've been following as we track COVID-19. And I need to use the click. There we go. And as we plan for return to in-person learning. So I will update you on the metrics that I've shared with you previously, including the daily number of new cases, the transmission rate, the positivity rate, the 14-day comparison of new cases, and the cases by age with a focus on the youth that live in the Parkway geographical boundaries. This graph here was pulled from the St. Louis County Department of Public Health COVID-19 Dashboard this morning, and it depicts the trajectory of the pandemic over time in St. Louis County. The red line is the seven-day rolling average of new cases, and we're beginning to see a very concerning increase in new cases during the past few weeks, which you can appreciate there in the blue circle. Of concern to me is the fact that we currently are sitting at the same level that we were at during the peak back in late July and early August. The state as a whole is also seeing dramatic increases in the numbers of COVID cases, as are many jurisdictions throughout the country. There's concern among public health officials that we're seeing the beginning of the next wave of infections. I am incredibly thankful to Ed Plus, and specifically Matt Goodman, who's provided a summary of several of our key data points, which you see here on the screen. What we see is an increasing seven-day average of daily new cases in St. Louis County and other counties in our region. Although our rates are higher than they have been previously, and actually since early December or September, they continue to be lower than our neighboring counties. You also see here that the transmission rate is 1.06, indicating that the virus is continuing to increase, and the positivity rate has increased significantly from 4.3% last week to 8.6% today. This means that 8.6 of the people who are tested for COVID are positive. You see here also that although this number is trending in the wrong direction in St. Louis County, it's much lower than St. Charles or the state as a whole. Another metric that I've shared with you before is this 14-day comparison of other, comparison of the change in new cases. And you may remember that this is really helpful because we're evaluating trends over time, and this metric, metric provides that view. The left column is St. Louis County, and we note that we've moved from, into the red threshold because the percent change has been greater than 10% for the last five, two-week data points. There was a 41.7% increase in the most recent 14-day comparison of change in new cases. Our health department, whoops, our health department is also following trends, and they release a report twice a month, and on the 15th, updated their analysis of COVID activity in St. Louis County. Here you see with the red arrows, the four data points that are worsening in St. Louis County for the period of September 29th through October 12th. And in addition to the increase in the rate and trend of new cases, and the increase in the test positivity rate, hospital admissions have also entered the red threshold. On this slide, we have cases by age for St. Louis County, and here you can dramatically see how adults, and particularly 18 to 24-year-olds, make up the vast majority of cases in the county. When I think about the risk of bringing students back together, this is a reminder to me that the bigger risk is bringing the adult staff members together. We're in a position as adults to help mitigate our own personal risk, and I'm hopeful that the low rates of youth plus the ability of our staff to help minimize their own risk will help ensure that we can maintain a healthy and safe learning environment. And a particular note is the positivity rate right now for 35 to 44-year-olds is sitting at almost 20%, which is a dramatic increase. So that is an indication that, of rising rates perhaps to come in that age group in Another encouraging data point is the drop in this, I'm sorry. This, this slide here is the data by age group that's provided by the state of Missouri, and I, the darker lines are the youth in St. Louis County, and you can see that the 15 to 17-year-olds, which are the lighter orange bar, have, have fallen dramatically, so they're, they're actually running closer to their younger counterparts in our region, which is a really good thing to see. But you can see those faded, those more faded bars or faded lines are actually the older age groups, and you can see where there's still really significant rates among older, older people in our county. This is a look at the Parkway This is a look at the Parkway geographic area data, and you can see it disaggregated by age, and you have a sense of the cumulative number of cases that we've seen, and the number that have been seen in the past 14 days. There's been a decline in the 15 to 19-year-olds in our area to less than, or 10 or less. So the total for all of the age groups in our geographic area for the past two weeks is 17. And you see the positivity rate for 5 to 9-year-olds still sits very low at 1.81%, but the positivity rate for 10 to 14-year-olds has actually gone up slightly to 5.03%, which is where the 15 to 19-year-olds are also sitting, which is a bit of a decrease. So that's actually good to see. I wanted to talk a little bit about the process that we're going to be using to decide disposition of individuals who may come in contact with COVID-19, or actually have COVID-19. So one of the public health terms that is used to help make this decision is called being a close contact. And a close contact is defined as someone who is in contact with a confirmed or presumptive positive COVID-19 person. They need to be within, or less than six feet for 15 or more minutes cumulative, so that means, you know, five minutes here, five minutes there, and five minutes another time within the 48-hour period, could be 15 minutes. And that contact comes within 48 hours of the onset of symptoms for the positive person. So one of the more important activities that we'll be engaging in this school year is identifying close contacts of individuals who are positive in our school district. There are two things that can happen that are related to COVID-19. One is quarantine, and quarantine keeps someone who might have been exposed to the virus away from other people. And quarantine is usually 14 days, it's a minimum of 14 days. Sometimes it can be longer. You can imagine situations in families where multiple people are becoming ill, where quarantine could actually last longer, because the quarantine starts on the day, or begins on the last day of contact that you have with that positive person. And if you can't isolate yourself from that person, you could have to spend the entire isolation period that that person is isolated in quarantine, plus an additional 14 days. So it could be 24 days or even longer for some folks. And then isolation keeps someone who's infected with the virus away from others, even in their own home. So we'll be working with our health department to determine whether a student or staff member needs to quarantine or isolate, which brings me to my next slide. Maybe, there we go. Parkway has identified a contact tracing protocol to help guide the work as we identify individuals who have COVID-19 in our schools, or who've been exposed to the virus or are a close contact. We have 33 nurses and 66 administrators who've completed the Johns Hopkins Contact Tracing Training, and these individuals are serving as the initial case investigators at the school level, and are working with our contact tracing coordinator to communicate to the health department and determine disposition in each individual case. Moving forward, we're going to share data about COVID-19 on our COVID-19 dashboard. And here on this screen, you can see the cases that have gone through the contact tracing process since the beginning of October. We don't even have kids back yet, but we certainly have had a number of cases. We anticipate that we'll be working with staff and students who are in isolation or quarantined for many months, and this may be really disruptive to their learning process or to the continuity of operations for the district. But we really are hopeful that Parkway staff and families will be mindful of their activities in the community, anything that may put them at risk of acquiring or being exposed to COVID-19. This week, Dr. Marty and I taped a message to our staff, which we will share with you now.
Pleased, this is School Superintendent Keith Marty with Dr. Robin Wallen. You know, as we bring students and staff back in person here in Parkway, we just want to take this opportunity to appeal to all of you, and to review good safety, good health procedures that we have in place. It's going to be everybody's responsibility here in Parkway, as we welcome individuals back into our schools, to ensure that we can stay safe and healthy. Each of us, including us, and all the adults and students, all stakeholders, are going to have to really be attentive each and every day. Dr. Wallen and I, you've been so intimately involved in setting up health and safety procedures, and working with our principals and our administrators. What advice or tips and ideas do you share?
Sure, I'm really proud that our schools have put mitigation measures in place to help keep them a safe place for learning. We have markers that encourage social distancing, all of us wearing masks, we have frequent hand hygiene, hand washing, and hand sanitizer available for our students and staff. We're asking everybody to do a daily health screening and stay home if they're sick. And I think all of these things are going to make a huge difference in our school setting. But I'm also concerned, I want to make sure that people are doing these exact same strategies at home also. So our lives and the community are really important, because we bring our community experience into the work setting. So it's really important that all of us are also doing these very same things in the community, so that we can sustain learning here in Parkway.
We're hearing from other administrators and superintendents and school leaders that have been in session, that they have to keep emphasizing each and every day, these good practices, and also to stay home if you're not feeling well.
Definitely. And we have a contact tracing protocol now, so if you feel that you may have been exposed to COVID-19, or you are having symptoms that maybe consisted with COVID-19, we have processes in place to help you problem-solve that, and to make sure that you have the resources you need and leave you need to stay home.
You know, it's not a matter of, you know, should we have students back or not be back, or can we, how we should do teaching and learning. We could do both, by these wonderful procedures and practices in place. We may certainly run into some issues, other school districts have, but like you said, we have the contact tracing in place, we got, you know, enough procedures in place. But we need, again, to be responsible and take care of one another. First of all, though, take care of ourselves.
It's partnership, for sure.
It is. So whether you're a parent, student, staff member, administrator, board member, anyone in the community, please, please, let's work together to ensure that we can be back, and certainly take care of our students and their learning needs, and all the needs that they have and we all have, as we get into this time of the school year, and it also has a challenge with other health issues, and certainly cold weather. But Dr. Wallen, thank you for your leadership. It's been tremendous, and we really appreciate all the work you've done, and your nurses and our staff as well. Thank you, and have a great day.
I don't think I've seen anything this big before. Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Wallen, and thank you, Dr. Marty, for that wonderful video. At this time, I'm going to begin focusing on pre-K 12, and I will focus a little bit more in detail on pre-K 8, and Dr. Beckner will come up and do a little bit more of detail between the grades nine through 12. So, as you know, we're in the midst of this global pandemic, and we had to think about how to do school differently. And so our parents, most recently, identified if they wanted their children to return in person for school, or participate in Parkway's virtual campus. And regardless of which learning preference families chose, kids will get the same services. They will receive services if they have an IEP, if they have a 504, if they're an English learner, if they receive gifted services. So please, note that all the services that students receive in our school buildings as they return, they will also receive through our virtual campus. And I want to focus a little bit on virtual campus, and I want you to note that you are seeing the new logo for virtual campus. Tonight is its reveal, thanks to James and our communications department, so, and Paul, and all of his team. Elementary students attending virtual campus will begin tomorrow with our students in person, and our students that are in middle school will begin on October 27th. In Parkway, our students attending virtual campus are very fortunate. They are fortunate to have a highly qualified Parkway educator, committed and dedicated to the educational experiences of all kids in virtual campus. Most people probably don't know that creating a virtual option, virtual campus, is essentially creating an entire new school, which we are calling Virtual Campus. As we have communicated in the past, not all students attending virtual campus will be with the teacher that they had first quarter. Some will be served by a teacher who technically may not be assigned to their home school. But most importantly, the teachers in our virtual campus are Parkway educators, highly qualified Parkway educators. And so it is most important to realize, as we think about this, is that we offered all families an option, and the families who chose virtual campus are going to be served just as our families who chose the in-person option. Dr. Jennifer Stanfield, our Director of Choice Programs, will serve as the Director of Virtual Campus, and we are lucky to have her serving in this capacity. She is a great resource, and most importantly, a great individual who will be working in collaboration with parents, students, and our administrators in the building. Now, for those who chose in-person, we're going to take a little time to focus on what that will look like. Parkway has a pandemic response plan, and I brought it right here. It has been on our website since the middle of July, and there's a lot of good information if you want to know what has been going on in Parkway, and how we are operationalizing the systems and structures during this time. Appendix B of the school operations plan, appendix B of the response plan, is school operations. And in the school operations plan, there are a number of areas that we focus on, and those are the areas that you see on the screen. I'm just going to share with you a few things around school operations, as we think about our kids coming back in person. What have our administrators been thinking about? What have our teachers been thinking about? What are we going to do to do our very best to ensure the safety and well-being of all those involved? So, under school in general, our nurses have worked with our administrators to find an isolation room within the building, a separate space beyond the nurse's office, where if students are showing symptoms and need to be picked up, they will go to this particular space to wait for a family member. And of course, we have very specific cleaning protocols for that space, as other spaces, once the student leaves. Our principals have determined where to mark the floors, so students can see social distancing and how they should walk. They're marking the walls, not with markers, but with painter's tape, to be honest with you, and creating arrows to show which way to walk down the hall. And we are also ensuring that those highly touched surfaces are cleaned. Our facilities department has done a wonderful job in outlining the specifics for our custodial staff, and they have a much greater task than they've had in the past, but they are up to the challenge, and there's some very specific things that they will be doing throughout the day. Under limiting contact, we are hosting activities virtually. We are hosting events virtually, PTO events virtually, performances virtually. We are restricting congregation of students and staff in certain areas. We know having, you know, the groups of students visit in the morning like they used to, that can't happen. So there are systems in place, and there will be very clear directions to get our kiddos to head to class. Our administrators have designated which doors should be used for entrances, and which doors should be used as exits, and those doors will be labeled appropriately. They've also implemented protocols for lunch. Now, there are elementary students in the past that are used to assigned seating at lunchtime, but we know our middle school students and our high school students are not used to that. But that is something that is going to have to happen as we return to in-person learning, because that will certainly help with our contact tracing if we have to move forward with that. We're also implementing protocols for student arrival and dismissal. You will find that students are entering doors that they typically have not entered, because our building principals needed to identify safe spaces that kids could enter among the building, to also try to spread out our students as they come in. And we will be communicating the limitations of parents and guardians and other guests in our buildings to help keep everyone safe. As far as the cafeteria is concerned, I already mentioned the assigned seating, and some of our schools have been able to locate additional locations for kids to eat. Not all kids will eat in a cafeteria. It's just dependent on the school, the plan, the size of their cafeteria, and the staff that they have. In our classrooms, we have done our very best, and our principals have been looking at this, to arrange the furniture to be as socially distanced as possible in the classroom. In addition, we have requested that teachers schedule time in the day for hand washing. We know that's going to be very important. Kids will also be expected to wash their hands before lunch, after lunch, and when they come in from recess. Next, we have the restrooms. You will find signs outside of our restrooms telling students how many students should be in the restroom. They go in the restroom, and they see that there are five kiddos in there, and the sign says five, then they should step back out and wait for someone to come in. Next, sanitation etiquette. And Dr. Wallen has been working with us around our sanitation etiquette, as we are wearing our masks, but we will be educating and enforcing good hand washing. We will also be placing hand sanitizer throughout the building. Some are on stands like this, and many are already attached to the wall. Next, we will also teach kids how to cough and how to sneeze. Have you thought about that? With your mask on and you have to sneeze, what do you do? Right? We're going to teach kids how to cough and how to sneeze. And also, we're encouraging kids to have an additional mask with them at school, because we all know that sometimes we need to change our masks throughout the day. As we think about limiting sharing, we're going to avoid sharing materials. As many of us know, in elementary school, sometimes we'd bring our school supplies, and you would have communal supplies, right? Not anymore. Everybody has their own supplies. In addition, we're really thinking carefully about our water fountains. We will be asking kids to bring a water bottle to school, so they can use the water filler and not the drinking fountain, to keep them as safe as possible. Those are just a few things that are part, I've got so many papers here, part of our school plan, that our administrators have been working through. In addition to the school plan here, I'm going to show you, they have 76 pages of details that they have been working through, and a lot of these have links in them, which consist of other pages of documents that they have to read and make sure that they are doing their best to prepare for our kids to return to school. So I do just want to make sure that you realize, as you read our school operations plan, there's been a lot that our folks have been doing to prepare for kids' virtual campus experience and their in-person experience. At this time, we're going to shift to riding the school bus, and what that experience might look like for all of our kiddos.
Hi, everybody. My name is Will Rosa, Director of Transportation for Parkway. Welcome to 2020. Things are a little bit different on the bus. However, we want to make it a safe environment for the kids to ride. Let me tell you what we're going to do. So on one of our buses, you see here, we are going to load, this year, we're going to have students loading from the back of the bus to the front. What does that mean? When we come to a bus stop, the students are going to board the bus with a face covering. Every student has to have a face covering or a mask. They're going to proceed to the back of the bus. We're going to have assigned seats. We want the students to sit in the same seat. Every day they ride the bus, same thing in the afternoon. With the exception of kindergartners, they need to sit in the front of the bus for safety. We want the kindergartners up front. We will not be loading the bus to the full capacity. We'll be distancing on the bus, and the other thing we'll be doing is cracking the windows to get some airflow in the bus. These are some of the recommendations that have been provided from the, by the C P C. These are some of the recommendations that have been provided by the secret seat. The bus driver also will be having a face covering, and the seat behind the bus driver will be left open. We have hand sanitizer as needed. We're hoping that students that ride the bus will wash their hands before they board the bus. Driver will be cleaning the bus frequently throughout the day, cleaning the high-touch areas where kids are going to be touching the tops of the seats and the hand railings throughout the day in between their routes in schools. And we're also going to do a deep cleaning every day on each of our buses. Our drivers are very excited and eager to get all the kids back on the buses, and we're going to transport you to and from school as safe as possible, and look forward to seeing you very soon.
Mr. Rosa has been, and his team have also been spending quite a bit of time ensuring that our kids have accurate bus routes, that we can pick up our kids at the right time. As you all know, parents communicated with us as whether or not that they wanted their kiddos to ride the buses, and so that is also helping keeping, helping to keep our buses not as packed as possible because many of our parents have so graciously agreed to drop their children off at school and pick them up from school. Thank you, Dr. Rosa, for that video. So now we're going to focus a little bit on pre-K 8. Pre-K, tomorrow, they are resuming the schedule that the parents registered them for without alternating days, full speed with pre-K tomorrow. We will have reduced class sizes, and we will be encouraging increased outdoor play as the weather permits. In-person preschool students, as you will see there, we had about 75% enroll in-person and about 25% will receive instruction virtually. Shifting to elementary, this is our Return to Learn Elementary School calendar. Tomorrow is the first day of in-person for 50% of our students. The other 50% will come back to school on Friday. During these days, they will be with the teacher they are assigned to for second quarter. Students attending Virtual Campus will also be with their second-quarter teacher beginning tomorrow. Second quarter begins on October 27. The first two weeks of the school year will be a transition period to allow our students to get used to the new protocols at school and allow our teachers to teach the new expectations. This transition will also allow us to continue monitoring the conditions in our community. Depending on those health trends, we will begin a five-day week on November 9. Families who have chosen Virtual Campus will begin working as well with teachers during the transition period. A few pieces of data that I thought you might like to see. 69% of our students will be participating in-person in Parkway. 31% will participate virtually. Specifically, elementary students, 32% will be participating virtually, beginning tomorrow with Virtual Campus. I thought you might also like to see how this breaks down by grade level, and so you can see there kindergarten through fifth grade, the percentage of kids participating in-person and virtual learning. And I know sometimes we are curious about what our different schools look like as far as participation. So McKelvey will have 61% of their students participating virtually. Claymont, 16% of families participating virtually, and all the other elementary schools are in-between that 61% and that 16%. Next, we're going to focus on middle school. Tomorrow and Friday, our middle schoolers will still be engaged in distance learning. Just like the elementary school, the first two weeks of the second quarter will be a transition period for our middle schoolers to reacquaint them to school and make sure that teachers are able to teach the appropriate protocols. Also, we'll continue monitoring the community spread, and if all still looks well, we will begin having all of our students return to school on November 9. And of course, our families who are participating via Virtual Campus will also begin with their teachers on October 27. Sharing some of the same data with middle school, again, 69% of all of our students in-person and 31% virtually, 33% of our middle schoolers are participating in Virtual Campus. And to see the breakdown of the grade levels, you will see those on the screen as well. In Northeast Middle School, 47% of our kiddos are participating virtually, and Southwest, 23%, and the other middle schools are in-between that 47 and 23%. The middle school will be on a block schedule. They have been on a block schedule since we began the school year, and that will just continue as we end second quarter. So nothing new in regards to scheduling for our middle school students, so that transition should be fairly simple for them as far as the schedule is concerned. And next, I'm going to ask Dr. Beckner to come. Oops. Okay. I'm really sorry. All right, I'm cleaning this for you and messing things up here.
Well, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to talk a little bit about our high school program. I did appreciate earlier, as a social studies teacher, that President Todd used the term yeoman's work, and since we made the decision earlier to return our high school students in-person, there have been an incredible number of people doing yeoman's work, and the definition of that term is very good, hard, and valuable work that someone does to support a cause or to help a team. And it has really been a team effort to get to this point. As I've mentioned several times in our recent meetings, just the work that it takes to get a high school schedule and all the staffing up and running, it really is an incredible process and a labor-intensive process. So I just want to name really quickly our high school schedulers in particular. At North High, that's Mike Rizzo. At Central High, that's Chris Dallas. At South High, that's Andrew Pappas-Moico. And at West High, that's Mario Papillo. And special recognition to someone who's not in that group but who has stepped up and gone above and beyond the call of duty, and that's Dr. Rhonda Page at North High. Dr. Page has stepped up and really taken the reins on scheduling the virtual component of this. As I've mentioned previously, it takes often four to six months to build that high school schedule, and they've, we're not there yet, but they're close. They're very close, and it's only because they've been all weekend evenings, late nights, especially Rhonda Page and Andrew Pappas-Moico have gone above and beyond. So before we even get into high school, I just want to recognize all the hard work that's going into this. Obviously, our teachers are doing an incredible amount of preparation work, but in order to get to the point that kids can come into school, have a schedule, we have good staffing in place, we've got everything there, it's just really an incredible, incredible amount of work, and just want to thank them for all that they put into that process. So here is our high school in-person calendar. So you see that we are beginning this, the calendar starts next week because we do have a calendar change, and that includes an extension of first quarter by a week. Under our previous calendar, you might recall that high school schedules were slated to begin tomorrow, this Thursday. We know the pace of first quarter is very fast. We know that there's a lot happening in first quarter, so that extension will give us a little bit more time, and it also allows us to ensure that those schedules are built, that our schools are staffed, that we have everything in place. So we will have virtual finals taking place Thursday, October 29, and Friday, October 30, and that will conclude our first quarter. Then our second quarter, we'll have a couple days off. We will not have school for 9th through 12th graders on Monday, November 2. And if you recall, our elementary and middle school students got some time to prepare their classrooms for students to return. High school students need, or high school teachers need that opportunity as well so that they can have their rooms ready for in-person learning, so that will take place on Monday, November 2. Then we have our election and grading day on the 3rd. We'll resume second quarter, or begin second quarter on Wednesday, November 4. We'll continue in distance learning for a few days through Monday, November 9, and then we'll begin our in-person schedule in a blended setting, beginning on Tuesday, November 10. It might seem a little odd that we're starting with Group 2 on the first day, but we did that in the off-chance that we had to extend elementary and middle school's blended schedule. That would ensure the families are on the same schedule, just the way the calendar fell. They'll still have the same number of days in terms of if that had to extend out beyond that, but we did have to start with Group 2. And then we certainly hope to safely return our high school students as soon as possible during this quarter. So some of the same data points that Dr. Watson shared, we do have 70% of our high school students have selected to return in-person with 30 virtual. That means that in Virtual Campus, we'll have about 1,600 students, which will make Virtual Campus our largest high school of our five high schools, including Ferrida, our six high schools in Parkway. So we'll have certainly lots of staff, lots of students, and we'll continue communicating with all of our students, both from their home schools and for students in Virtual Campus. As with the other levels, we see not a huge disparity between grade levels in terms of the number of students selecting Virtual Campus. In this case, between high 20s, low 30% for all four grade levels. We do see, as we have with the other levels, a difference between some of the schools in terms of high and low numbers, and that's North High with 40% of students selecting to attend Virtual Campus, and at South High, 26% with the other two middle schools right in between those, or other two high schools, I should say. Much talk about the high school schedule, and knowing that in a typical year, high school students would have seven classes spread over first semester, and in first quarter, high school students had four classes. That leaves three classes and an academic lab for the second quarter. So how do we divide that time, and how do we support our students, and how do we make sure that we've got a good setup for them? So here you see our bell schedule for second quarter for our high schools. We have built in a learning support period at the beginning of each day. That's a time that will be similar to an academic lab where we can support student learning. Will be slightly different in the past, different today because we are going to be restricting travel just in the sense of health. We don't want students just wandering around the building, moving freely, that sort of thing, so we will be doing some virtual support during that time. All students will be expected to attend, and our high school principals are developing plans. If a student really doesn't need that support and wants to have a shortened schedule, they're developing what that plan might look like. Then we have our three academic periods spread throughout the day. You see, beginning with our fifth period at 7, or, I'm sorry, our sixth period at 8:40 with our last period starting at 12:45. So essentially, our high school schedule starts and ends at the same times that it did prior to the pandemic. That allows us to keep our three-tier bus system, still provide lunch, all those things that we typically do. But you'll note that each period is approximately 100 minutes within this bell schedule. That doesn't mean it's 100 minutes of straight instruction. We know that there's going to be new things that teachers and students will have to do. We know we'll have to build in breaks. We don't want everybody going to the bathroom at the same time. We know that we need to increase hand washing, sanitation, those sorts of things. And we also know that students need more support. We know that we do have an increased number of students who were failing classes during first quarter, and we'll need opportunities to support those students. So during that 100-minute block, approximately 70 of those minutes will be for curricular instruction, for students learning that content. Approximately 20 minutes of that time will be set aside to provide direct support for students who are in those classes. That includes both students who are learning virtually and students who are learning in-person will have that time. And then approximately 10 minutes will be set aside for those breaks, hygiene. We've been joking, call it our COVID care time. We need to have COVID care time to make sure that we've got time for all those activities that have to take place to ensure that our schools are safe and we have everything together and in order for our high school students. We were, as we're building the schedule, we were able to schedule about 93% of our high school classes as either fully virtual or fully in-person, which is great, and the question is, well, what are the rest of them? The way the numbers break down, particularly with classes with low enrollment, you can't, if there were only, say, 12 students in a class and half of them want virtual and half of them want in-person, you can't staff both. So we will have a handful of classes where we're calling virtual in-person, which means a student might come to school, but they're actually still going to participate in a virtual class. And all the students, whether they're in-person or at home, would still participate in that class. By doing so, that will allow us to still continue offering all the courses that students have requested and signed up for, and we'll still be able to make sure that they can have the courses that they might want or need in their course paths. And then Dr. Watson wanted to make sure that I shared that regardless of, if you don't take anything else away from all this, the biggest thing is we care about our kids. We care about our teachers. We care about our people. We want to make sure that everybody is safe, well-cared-for, that we are going to do everything in our power to make sure that this return to in-person learning, whether that's elementary, middle, or high, goes smoothly because we want the best for all of our families, all of our students, and all of our staff members. So at this time before, I think we go to activities, we'll pause and see if there are any questions about our Return to Learn plans for elementary, middle, or high school. If there are no questions, we'll be happy to turn it over to Mike Roth to talk about athletics and activities as well.
I wouldn't want it to appear that nobody's questioning anything. Obviously, we've all been kind of develop, you developing us, overseeing and asking questions for weeks, so our lack of asking questions shouldn't be seen as a lack of sort of interest and involvement, but thank you for explaining it so eloquently, and I think I speak for all of us, and wishing you the best of luck in carrying it out. It certainly won't be easy.
Thank you. With that, I believe Mike Roth on athletics and activities.
Thank you. President Todd, Dr. Morty, fellow board members, it is truly my pleasure to be here tonight. Dr. Beckner mentioned last March at the board meeting, when just everything just went crazy. I was at a sectional basketball game, and I heard the announcement that they had someone test positive in one of the professional leagues of the NBA, and I just, I knew there were some troubles on the horizon. We certainly had no idea what it was going to entail, and seven months later, we finally would be back in-person and finally have the opportunity to go to some football games and watch our bands perform and watch our student athletes perform and have our activities. So we're truly blessed. I started off my slide here with some pictures, and actually, a couple of these were just from last week. Some of our state championships, our golfers, state tennis, some band members, the South cheerleaders and dance squad, volleyball match with Parkway Central and Parkway North. So our student athletes are simply thrilled to have the opportunity to compete, and I want to thank you for giving them that opportunity. They're really thrilled. This is an aerial photo of our band practicing, social distancing. We shot it with a drone, six feet apart, all wearing masks. I think we might even have had our eighth graders at this band performance at Central High. Many of our band and music groups are performing, practicing at the high school level, which is just tremendous. So what I want to focus on tonight is, you know, what are we doing? And there's so much that's involved with activities, not just the athletics, but the activities, and so many of our groups are involved right now virtually, and our sponsors, our coaches are spending a great amount of time with our student athletes and involved in activities. These are just some examples of what's taking place at the middle schools. Most of these activities are at all the middle schools with some band scholars, recording the fight song, theater productions, working on plays, choir virtual practices, orchestra, drama, Peter Pan rehearsals, triple choir, drama. All these things are taking place virtually, which is tremendous for our students. At the high school level, many activities also going on in the fine arts. Our marching band, we did a virtual competition with the bazzu folks. Marching band, we did a virtual competition with the bazzu folks. Choir, orchestra, theater are doing virtual meetings almost, not daily, but weekly. Debate is meeting virtually, our Scholar Bowl, they're all meeting virtually. So the fine arts, the activities piece is really getting connected with our student athletes. At the high school level, one group I really want to point out, our robotics group has been doing some fascinating work. For the last six to seven months, they've been making 3D PPE and making donations to local health organizations. So they've been doing tremendous work in those efforts. Also, our robotics team, they're practicing for the virtual competitions and just have been doing a great job. So I want to point that out, the level of commitment that they've been making so far at the high school level. Our different clubs meeting at the high school level, many activities taking places, again, virtually, drama, choir, StuCo, Scholar Bowl, different groups meeting at all levels. There are some at Central High, you can note there, others at North High, also meeting virtually. Again, our teachers and sponsors have done a tremendous job of trying to keep our students connected, whatever that is. They've been just going above and beyond, so just really thrilled with the commitment level that they've made at all of our high schools and our middle schools. South High, more clubs taking place, doing a great job. And at West High, different clubs too. Many of them are just, you know, they can't wait to get back in person, so we've kind of put the brakes on them a little bit, and we're kind of waiting until we get back into school in person to have those clubs and activities take place after school in person. But certainly, the work they've been doing virtually has simply been incredible. A little bit of a timeline of what's taken place over the last couple of months. Excuse me, too many papers here. Way back when, in March, obviously, our issues started, so we took a break for a while. We moved on to July, and some of our athletic workouts did start, and Dr. Wallen mentioned about the tracing taking place and what's going to, and Dr. Watson also mentioned what's going to happen in our schools coming up in the next couple of weeks. What I want to point out is, really, our building activities and athletic directors, this started in July for them. So we were doing some tracing, we were doing any issues that came up, they've done just a ton of work, so I really want to thank them. We did start practices on August 24th, Misha practices. Some of our games started in September with our low-frequency contact sports. Those include tennis, golf, cross-country, and boy swimming. We started other competitions September 28th with our moderate-frequency contact sports. Those include softball, girls volleyball, boys soccer, and field hockey. And finally, we started playing games on October 3rd with our high-frequency contact sports. Those are football. So again, these are some other pictures. A picture on the left was just the other day at our state golf championships in Joplin. I think it was rainy and about 48 degrees, but we had some medalists down there, action with volleyball, action with our cheer and dance at South High. There's a medalist in the middle from Parkway South, state tennis, another one of our golfers from Central High on the left, and we have a Parkway Central versus Parkway North football game from a couple of weeks ago. So just some pictures, just really some fabulous things that our student athletes and our coaches have been working with. So fall athletics, where are we at? Well, it's October 21st, we've been playing for a couple of weeks now. Some of our sports already have ended, believe it or not. So girls tennis, softball, girls golf, those had district and state action already. Field hockey is taking place this week. We have girls volleyball with districts starting next week, cross-country, boys and girls, districts coming up October 30th and 31st. Our football district will start next Friday with Week 10, and boys soccer, district's coming up in early November, and boys swimming will have their last meet of the year, the state meet, November 12th and 14th. So here it is, October 21st, and we feel like we're just kind of getting into school mode, but our activities and athletics have been going on for a while, and believe it or not, will be over before long. So moving forward, where are we at? November 2nd is our official start of practice through Misha. Boys basketball, girls basketball, boys and girls wrestling, and girls swimming. Our first contest will start after Thanksgiving, November 30th, and you're asking, okay, so what are we doing? What adjustments are we taking place? Just as I watched the video earlier of Will Rosa, we have many adjustments that we're also making in regards to athletics and activities. Some of those adjustments are, and let me just mention that we did have to submit a plan to St. Louis County as to how are we doing things? What are we going to do? What precautions are we going to take place? And Brian Kessler from Parkway West really kind of did yeoman's work with that, did above and beyond, and actually, we got the reply back from St. Louis County the next day with our approvals. So the main adjustment and what we're really concerned about, besides our screenings every day, is simply our spectators, our crowd sizes, our gatherings. So what are we going to do there? We want our kids to compete, we want our parents to see them, so we limited our crowds. We have two family members per participant. Everyone is wearing masks and face coverings. Lockrooms, we're not using anymore. Tournaments, all have adjustments, so we will have basketball tournaments this year. Typically, in a basketball tournament, you might have a game at 4:00, 5:30, and 7:00. Now our games may be at 4:00. Clear out the gym, wash down, clean the benches, bring in a new group of players and teams at 6:00. Clear the gym out after that, and then bring in the varsity game afterwards. No longer will we have our eight-team traditional basketball tournaments. The large wrestling tournaments will simply go by the wayside. That's okay. Our kids can now compete in duels and tries. We'll do it the same way. We'll bring in one team at a time, they will compete, we will clear the gym, we will clear the mats, clean the mats, we will clean the benches, and we take all the precautions we can. So increased time between contests, increased cleaning procedures. Will mentioned about the transportation. We load from the back of the bus. We do a seating chart for the bus, so we know exactly which player, which student athlete, where they sat on the bus, who sat next to them. The coach signs off on the sheet, they give it to the bus driver, and Will's department takes care of that, so that's been, you know, that's been very beneficial. And obviously, just simply practicing social distancing, everything we can do to help out. So that's kind of a summary, a little bit. I do want to say thanks again to my team. I've got a tremendous group that works with me at Parkway Central, John Theobald, at Parkway North, Corey Johnson, at Parkway South, Matt Roach, and at Parkway West, Brian Kessler. Again, they've been doing the contact tracing and really doing yeoman's work for quite some time. I also want to thank Dr. Robin Wallen. She's been tremendous to work with, very organized, and the amount of work that she's given, and the commitment that she's given to our student athletes and Parkway has been tremendous. So thank you very much. Any questions, comments?
Mike, I'll just say, I've got a middle schooler, and I know that the clubs are different in middle school, not part of Misha, but you know, to Pam's point earlier about, you know, attending, it was just so wonderful to see our students getting back into their games and their performances. It is just so healthy for them to get back. And so anything that we can do as a district to continue that effort, even if it means limiting, I think, I haven't heard anybody complaining about limiting the number of people. We're just getting our kids back out there, and everybody's taking precautions, and it seems to be working. Do you have any major concerns moving forward about what we're doing, and anything else that should be done at all?
You know, I really don't. We've done such a good job working with the St. Louis County Health Department. Again, everything we're doing has their blessing, and you know, someone mentioned earlier, our student athletes and our parents, they want this so badly that they're going above and beyond to take precautions. I can remember the look on some of our student athletes' faces in the spring, when things just went by the wayside, and then when we came back and started doing some clubs and some activities in the fine arts and the bands and the virtual practices, and then when we started with some of those athletic contests, to have those seniors out there and to have them competing, and to have their parents there to watch them, I mean, it just goes beyond words. It was just a great experience. Prime example is down in golf last weekend, in state tennis, it was in Springfield and Joplin, we took two or three athletes down there. And the appreciation that the parents had that their son or daughter was allowed to have these memories, because you cannot get back memories that go away. And I think what we're establishing with our activities and our athletics is simply memories for kids and for parents that will never go away. And that's why I think this is truly so special, what we do.
And I appreciate you bringing in the other, the non-athletic pieces too, the drama and the fine arts, because that's just so important as well, and knowing that that's continuing and being supported, albeit in different ways. We're all getting used to a new way of living around here, so that's it, and it's just wonderful to see that continuing on as well. So thank you so much for all of your support in making this happen.
Yeah, the questions, comments?
Just thank you very much. Just outstanding work for Chelsea with younger grades, Kevin, and of course, what you've done. The decisions were just made, I guess, what, a couple of weeks ago or so? And what has been accomplished in this period of time is just absolutely amazing. Talk about yeoman work, I mean, it's tremendous. And you've thought about every single thing and giving every child an opportunity, every kid an opportunity to participate and to learn in the classroom as well as activities and athletics, and it's going to be very much appreciated, there's no question. But thank you all very much.
Well, good evening. I'm going to wrap it up tonight. You've had a lot of dates and facts and figures thrown at you. I've tried to put on one slide just some of the key things, and I think, if nothing else, you can print this one out so you can have it on your calendar. I'll just briefly go over a few things, just to kind of summarize where we're going. We've got a very busy next few weeks. In the tan colors are some of the key events for our kindergarten through eighth-grade families, and in the green are the high school. So earlier this week, we did communicate the class schedules and teacher assignments for our elementary students and families. We also communicated the bus schedules and drop-off and pickup times for K through 8. That was also earlier this week. And then we have the in-person transition activities this week, primarily dedicated towards kindergarten families and then families who are new to Parkway earlier in the week. And then, of course, as was mentioned, starting tomorrow, knock on wood, we're going to have at least half of our elementary kids back. I was at one of the elementary schools this morning, and I can tell you, the pace is feverish. They're really working to get ready for tomorrow, they're excited about it. And so we'll have them coming back Thursday and Friday. And then, starting next Tuesday, we will have all K-8, with the second quarter beginning on the 27th, and then all of our middle schoolers back. Again, they're also on that blended model, starting on Tuesday. For the high school students, I forgot, well, so today, we did communicate the class schedules for the middle school kids. Those were available in infinite campus today. And then, moving forward, we will communicate the high school group assignments and some of the calendar changes that we had to do to accommodate some of the changes. That will happen tomorrow. And then, next week, on Monday, before the presidential election, we will communicate, because there's no school that day for high school. So on that day, we will communicate the class schedules to families for high school. And then, of course, the third is a no-school day, no one's in school on Election Day. And then, on the fourth, that Wednesday, we will communicate the bus stop information for high school families, and of course, then the second quarter begins, and that will be in the virtual format for high school at that time, but they will begin then on the 10th in in-person learning for high school, also on the blended learning model. So those are some of the key dates coming up. It's a very busy time, I will say. The excitement is building, I feel it, and it's been really, I will say, nice to be back together in the buildings these past few days. I think we're ready and excited and eager to get the kids back. One last note, we talked about a lot of people to thank, and I was just thinking about this building here and how nice it is, and we commented on it, and there's a lot of other wonderful construction that has taken place this summer. You know, when the bond issue was passed in November of 2018, the summer of '19 didn't have a ton of construction, because it's so soon, but this has been a big summer. And despite COVID, our facilities team and our construction partners have stepped up and done a lot of work, and I know we'll come back like we do every fall, kind of give you an update on what all has happened, but the communications team will also share all the good work with our community. And that's the last group I want to thank, and that's our community, because they have been so generous and supportive of us over the years in our bonds, and this facility would not be possible without their support. And we don't want to forget our neighbors who don't, maybe no longer have kids in school, but they're still supportive, and they're wonderful neighbors and friends of Parkway. So we also want to thank them as well. Just wanted to throw that plug in there. Any other, any questions for me, subject to your questions? That's all I had.
I don't, I have a question. I don't know, I don't know who it's for, actually. But with the talk lately in the county broadly about people being mad about mask ordinances and just getting, having opinions on that, if there was a change and in the county, they were to say there will no longer be any mask ordinances, could we still have requirements for masks in our buildings?
I see Rob and Dr. Wallen shaking their head, yes.
Okay. Because I would be incredibly not okay with not requiring masks in our buildings. So I just wanted to check and make sure that we can, we can do that.
Well, one of the things I'm hearing from other superintendents and that the students and staff have been very compliant in the districts, and so I think that everybody is willing to do that, because I think people want to be in school, as we've mentioned, so badly, that I think we can continue to have that requirement.
Good.
Other questions?
I don't have a question necessarily for you. It may be best for Dr. Bogus or Dr. Matheson, or maybe even Chelsea, but my question is, one of the slides talked about the schedule of the day, whether it was in high school or whatever, and the class periods and the times for breaks and things like that. Are teachers going to have enough breaks themselves during the day? I know, you know, we, teachers often have a planning period, and with cramming as much as they're doing in to support our students right now from remotely, once they get back into the schools, are they going to have that time for themselves to stop and take a, you know, a breather and just, you know, keep their thoughts together? I don't know who best to pose that to, so.
Yeah, so Dr. Watson's turning around to Pat McPartland, our teacher representative here tonight, because we know that's an issue he always is talking to us about, ensuring that we have ample planned time for our teachers. So we are going to be sure to be adhering to our planned time, to make sure that the teachers get the number of minutes required per our contract, and then if they, for some reason, don't, for example, in high school, every year, we have somebody who ends up, we ask them to teach an extra block, they're compensated for that, and that's by their willingness to do that, but we are, we are working hard to ensure that we're following and abiding by those planned time minutes that are built into the contract.
And then, another one maybe for Dr. Bogus, or maybe you can answer. I know CARE ATC provides a lot of support, and our insurance provides a lot of support. Have we thought about communicating to our staff in general, the various supports that are available, because of all the anxiety and stress that many people are experiencing, that they may not have been in a normal school year? I just think it might be worthwhile to underscore that.
We have been on an ongoing basis. Leah Gonzalez has been putting things out district-wide, also to, every building has a wellness rep, and those wellness reps are also pushing things out to their staff. Leah, based on a conversation we had and sat probably last month or so, gave some ideas to the wellness leaders about things they might want to facilitate within their buildings, because what we were, what principals were hearing...